Medians TV. We had new introductions. We can start over here with Megan.
Megan, I think the minute.
Ed used Ben and City.
Larry Jacobson from Nibley.
Lynn Payne from Trenton.
David here from Millville.
David with Alga.
Tom Bailey, Wellsville.
David's up special.
Kathleen Alder Prominent.
Paul Erickson Richmond.
Holly Dean Love and Stephanie Miller Hyber.
Lindsay Peterson North Logan, Chris Monson.
Brian Cox, Hyde Park.
Jeff Hall Lewiston.
Hunter and Nate Lee, fourish.
Jeff Gilbert, staff of COG.
Frank Idalco, Barston.
Jesse Ma, Cash County and Staff of COG.
And we've also got a.
Landis.
Landis.
How you say it?
Want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, I am the new Regional Trail Coordinator for the county. And this is my first day. So I'm really excited to be working with all of you and still play at two time events. Working on all your projects, connection and towards. That's my background is architecture, regional and driving the planning. I'm excited to bring those skills. Thank you.
First day.
First day.
Three months behind.
But everything gets better after this meeting. Yeah, Matt Holmes on Zoom. That's what Fire Room City, okay? Matt, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Justin Ma.
Hi guys, thanks, Justin, with Nibley City.
Greg Giles on. Okay, Craig Giles in Smithville.
Yep, Craig Giles, Smithville City.
Okay, for the introductions. Next on our agenda is approved minutes of our October third. Talk meeting. Discussion almost.
Almost to approve the minutes second.
Yeah, motion is second on favor. Any opposed? Okay. Next on our agenda, review the project scoring results. And consider approval for twenty twenty two talk funding. If I'm understanding correctly. Executive Zook has a motion on this.
Mayor Jacobson wants to talk about it.
Mayor Jacobson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, many thanks to all the mayors that supported projects in the South and especially Nibley City. We purposely offered the COG three phases of a project, knowing that it may not be right. Whatever that means to put that much larger percentage into the into the Nibley twelve hundred West project that we discussed. Thank you very much. Two of those phases were fully funded and a third phase is partially funded. And Nibley City would like to withdraw the Phase Five Nibley Project with the intention that automatically the Hiram project would move into that position and be fully funded. Now, to be clear. We're not abandoning Phase Five. We fully intend to come back next year and pitch that once again. For this year, we withdraw our Phase Five request to.
So.
I'm sure what that looks like.
Yeah, well, we'd like to now show you what that's going to look like and what that will allow us to going forward with what we have.
So just as a reminder, you know, we we, once we get your scoring, the way the COG policies dictate how this phase of the discussion happens is we we simply try to fund as far down the list as the fun as the funding goes and apply the rule set aside as per our policy. So that's what was sent out to you, which as the mayor noted, looks like this and includes three hundred and twenty five thousand of partial funding for that Phase Five. With with Nibley, if they were to relinquish that Phase Five. What would happen there would be that project would be skipped. You go down the list and so Hiram at that point would receive full funding of their request, which would be two hundred and sixty seven thousand thirty two. That would also push fifty eight thousand, the remaining of that amount to the Logan project. So that's how that would shake out. With the motion that you present.
Right, so it's it's not a motion unless you want it to be a motion. Nibley City is withdrawing Phase Five request.
So I think what we'd look for at some point is a motion to approve the recommendation with that amendment. And we kind of tie it to this, this when the time is right.
No, it's a it's a section to the north. And so the phasing is as we requested. Thank you very much for that.
So again, if it's just a portion is funded. And but it's not enough to really do the project. So how does that work?
So you're talking in the case of Logan?
Right, I mean, would that be applied to another year or, you know, if there's only that much, I mean, maybe we roll, I mean, roll that down to some of the other communities. So some of the more rural projects can be funded because, I mean, if it was a larger amount to maybe get the project started, that would keep us on schedule with the engineering, but you know, on that size of a project, it's just the fifty eight that.
Yeah, that's put you in a difficult spot. So, yeah, I mean, realistically, you could hold those funds and reapply or, you know, use other funds. I mean, it's kind of up to you how you want to approach that. If you did want to forego that, then it would it would roll down and I can show you that scenario. If that's where you want to head. So I'm, this is Brian Cox, I'm I'm curious. So come December of two thousand twenty three. Nibley will have will have spent the three point.
Six roughly.
That will all have been expended. All of that will be.
No, we we won't have finished that project. We'll be working.
So our our COG policies give a number of years for projects to carry out. Yeah, when when that happens, then there's there's the Cornish and the amalgas that don't get the three hundred thousand and cities are sitting on other funds that are being and and Hyde Park's guilty of the same thing with Wolf Pack. But if if we're not gonna be shovel ready, as Kathleen brought up last time. And gonna expand and build that, how do we? How we justify not paying for something that can be paid for and done in this next construction cycle and let somebody else sit on those funds?
Mayor Dan says your question. Nibley withdraws and no other researches their three hundred and twenty five thousand for that first project. Then Hiram disbanded for two hundred and sixty seven thousand, that leaves fifty eight thousand. Is your question whether or not that fifty eight thousand would then roll down to the next project in one which is.
Well, if if we were to withdraw, then it will obviously would do that and it probably makes sense. Again, I think part of the bigger discussion is item four, which we'll get to. It's like, do we really want to continue to fund engineering projects? And maybe that totally makes sense versus actually going to construction. But again, on on an eight hundred thousand dollar, you know, project. You know, so maybe just the smaller community should use that fifty eight thousand this year to get some things done and again, that kind of sets us back a year on our schedule trying to get that project designed and then into construction, but.
If you want to see what that scenario would look like?
Well, I I'm curious first though, Mayor, before you talk about withdrawing, if we were to give that fifty eight thousand to Logan because that was next in line, would would you be able to use that to get started on the project?
I'm not sure that's. Is that really enough to get?
Hundred and sixteen then? No, it'd be fifty thousand.
Right. So.
Would it be worthwhile to do that?
I use my answer, it'd be hard to start with. We would have to see, could we supplement that with other unplanned budgets or possible savings or rearrangements of other budget for this has become a much higher priority for development? If we do that, yeah, the fifty eight thousand will help to get there. I don't know, we've had a chance to look at full budget yet to say fifty eight thousand makes that difference. If it's just fifty eight, and that was. But if it's fifty eight, with other money we can come up from our budget, then we'll possibly use it. But that's fair.
I'd say the fifty eight would allow us to get our demand down.
So the way.
We're not next in line, but.
Yeah, so the way if if Logan with materials there amount that what it would look like would be this. And what would happen is that fifty eight thousand would skip over Logan. The next in the line is Mendon. Now Mendon's a rural area that qualifies for the rural set assignment. So that means they would then qualify for fifty eight thousand of what we call any area funds that would go to partially fund the hundred and nine thousand dollar request of Mendon. And then rather than draw the full amount out of the rural set aside, their request would only draw fifty one thousand rather than not the four hundred and nine thousand out of the rural set aside. And if you push that down, that would mean Trenton's project, which in the previous scenario only got partial funded, they were almost the requested amount. But I think under the other scenario.
Sort of about three thousand dollars.
Yeah, they they had requested three hundred and sixty nine thousand and they they would only get three hundred and sixty seven thousand. So under this scenario, they would be fully funded and then it would actually push fifty six thousand down to Cornish. Now, Cornish has the same problem with that of a project that was a hundred and forty five thousand. You know, what what can be scaled back for a hundred of of that project? So that's the same kind of issue with now corny checks.
Would it be fifty six thousand at this point?
Yeah, fifty six thousand eight hundred. And that allocates the full amount. So that's under the scenario of both Nibley and Logan withdraw their those two projects at once.
So Mayor Cox, I'd like, I think, try to answer the question he asked. Yeah, these are shell ready projects in Nibley and you say, well, why are why isn't, perhaps you're asking, why isn't Nibley taking the money from shovel ready project? And the answer to that is we already made that request. We re-invested funding in all three shovel ready phases. I asked for that and, you know, you all decided that's fine, that it wouldn't be right to spend that much money in Nibley and South Valley on this funding. And so we accept that. And so instead of starting a third of a project, you know, our decision is that we think that money could be used better elsewhere and we'll come back next year and take our chances about getting the third phase, the final phase of this twelve West project funded. Yeah, we're ready to go, but we we would rather look at it as a full commitment from the COG to fund that instead of walking away with one third of a commitment. And we're willing to take that up next year without any guarantee. We we understand that. I don't know what next year will bring. There may be a completely different set of priorities, but we'll, you can count on we will we will resubmit this next year.
But I think going further than that, Mayor Cox, you're trying to say you want to guarantee they're going to spend that money next year. I think that's. No, not I don't understand why we could expect that, right?
The, no, I I'm I'm just. All of the phases, all all of the projects have have merit. I'm, when when I look at this, I try to look at the totality of the county, not Hyde Park. I I I wasn't one or two in my voting on my city. I drive your roads. And so I'm I'm looking at the whole county, what needs to be accomplished? Not just me. And so if if we can make money accomplish things, knowing that even if you got the three point eight, whatever it is for Phase One is their Phase Three and Four. That's not going to be expended. If it was funded to a seventy percent on Phase Four. You might still be, could could you come back and ask for thirty percent and then Phase Five? The next next year, knowing that potentially there those funds aren't going to be expended, likely not all of it would be expended this next construction cycle.
So your asking us to give up more?
I'm just asking, what's the feasibility? I know there's, I know there's a lot of money out there that's sitting with shelf life.
Yeah, but those are committed projects, right? Those are made decisions.
I think it's probably, I think Mayor Cox is just echoing what his original plea was, right? In the beginning of when we submitted these projects is to maybe take a look at prioritizing our the projects that we asked for. I I don't, I mean, I don't know. I don't want to put words in your mouth. Brian, but.
I agree with you. It's. Like I said, all of the projects have merit and and I'd like to see how we can accomplish something.
So we have this group's opinion on prioritization. It's how it's scored. Right? The combination of the C TAC and 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 the COG scoring, we we know what those scores came. If we want to talk about how we do that prioritization, I think that's the next item on the agenda, right? But we have the answer for this year.
Yeah, so in terms of how, what state code allows us to do, so state code connotates doing the rating and ranking like we have and you know, framing out the allocation like we have and then, but it allows that if the COG collectively in a public meeting wants to move one project above another, you have that discretion to do that as long as you do it in a public meeting like we are here and that you kind of state the reasons why. And the reasons could be, you know, these projects only got partial funding. They it wasn't reasonable when we ordered them, so we we switched it or changed that allocation based on that or or whatever other reason. And state code allows that as long as we do it that way, we can tweak the recommendation. Now, you know, I would never encourage you to do crazy tweaking because I think that will defeat the whole purpose. You know, wholesale moving projects around, certainly something like this where you're just adjusting the projects on the, you know, the lower end and making it work better is perfectly within what's allowed by state code and our policies.
Speaking of partial funding, if we were to follow the scenario that laid out for us and that was only fifty six thousand going to Cornish. Cornish will be able to use that fifty six thousand.
Yeah, that puts me in a difficult position because I don't think I have the budget without talking to the council to make that difference. And it's something that we will want to have done in the next year, so we can just go out and do the whole project on fifty six and
Do you just roll that fifty six thousand and, you know, forward into next year? There's a little more.
We just roll into next year. But yeah, I guess a Cornish, it would amalgas would have a chance to take take those funds and if that was a, I believe their, where theirs is just a chip and seal, that's more of a scalable project where they can say, we're just gonna do said do three miles, we can do two with that amount of funds. So I might could say yes, but I'm not in a position to even say yes tonight. So, you know, that's the actual chance. I mean, you could do the motion contingent on what you find out that it would go one way if they say yes and one way if they say no. The problem is though is it's scheduled for county council tomorrow night. So that answer would need to come speedy fast.
And that's from Mayor Dan, right? But it's making that.
Well, I think you've already made that.
Yeah, again, I mean, we're not going to be able to, we have to make any six thousand dollars. So let's let's summon up, use the money that can.
So if we if we made a motion tonight that was contingent on what your council says, you think you'd be able to get an answer to us in twenty four hours?
Actually, let's.
Yeah, so let's make a motion that amalgas gets to check. So like, can they use it? I would have to be part of it, I guess.
Well, again.
We can do part of it, yeah, then we can.
Better than no part.
Yeah, yeah, right.
It's a scalable project.
That's the key right there.
But if his council chooses not to, again, you can throw that in.
I think we could, we could do that if that was.
You know, filling our purpose right here is what we're doing. I appreciate what's being said, the discussions taking place, vital. And it's it's very sellable to the Cash County Council when this is reported back to them, how we handle. We have less likely opportunity to challenge what we do.
I think one thing about about this, you know, we have, we have all this money, we got these projects and and the projects, you know, it seems to me like the project should be ready to do pretty well and just to hold some of this money over for a number of years and other people are ready to do the projects and then then they then they kind of lose out on that. I think Brian's got it right on to talk about this money.
It's it's not just this year. I mean, I know there's, there's other monies that the COG has that it's getting shelf life. The projects are approved, but.
What is that time limit?
So our our COG policies, you have it at six years. So there's a generous, and and so part of the reason it's generous is sometimes projects have to artificially be pieced up, like thirty one hundred north was four different COG requests over four different years. So if you if you had a real tight timeframe and 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 they're pieced up, not because they don't want to do the project now, they're pieced up because it's not within the capacity of the COG to fund a fifteen million dollar project in one year. So that's why we have a six year timeframe that, you know, sometimes his phases of twelve west or thirty one hundred north on it. They take that time to mature and get ready. But I will tell you that our 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 funding projects have been going better and quicker. We're not sitting on, and Jess has done a good job of kind of working the cities to get those moving. So if you look at our aging report or kind of the age of the projects, we don't have many really old projects. They're they're all projects that you've approved in the last couple of years for the most part is holding up that money. And rural projects take a while. I mean, when you have to work in a particular construction season. So if you miss it, you want to bid it at a favorable time, you know, sometimes it's just hard and these projects take longer. We still have a an intent to try to get the money moving as quickly as possible. And I will tell you, Mayor Cox's point. You know, we sit on a balance in Cash Town's bank account. Nine million, I don't know where, you know, sometimes it's fifteen million and it's just sitting there waiting for projects to mature. You know, UDOT, when they do that, I'm not saying we have to do this, and this would be a discussion for policies for next year, but they actually over allocate. And they they pick a project that they know is going to go quicker. You know, and as long as you manage that fund, when this project goes, their money's available, you can actually finance or program your money set, that that money that's doesn't sit in the bank account, it allows a project to go that otherwise wouldn't. But that's, you have to be very careful about that, obviously, and manage that budget because, you know, if you committed to a budget in a certain year, you need to know it's there. But that, UDOT does that, they over allocate their fund because they're using that fund balance to kind of facilitate them. That's something to think about. I'm not suggesting we do. We can't do that this year, but that gets to Mayor Cox's point that it in a in an inflation, in a in a day of a hyperinflation, sitting on money is not a good idea.
Yeah, but you've also got the last three years has been pandemic type issue, but we are still not out of dealing with labor forces like Jen, this is like Jen. So that's still playing a major role. This is not.
If we're ready, I'll take a stab at the motion. I would make a recommend, or make a motion that we accept the twenty twenty two COG funding recommendations and forward that to the county council as presented with the bone changes that Nibley's Phase Five, we withdrawn that Hiram's project, we funded it, you know, two hundred and sixty seven thousand thirty two dollars. And that now this project be funded in the amount fifty six thousand eighty two dollars. As I kind of.
The only, we would need, amalgas would be fully funded. That was the other small change that would take.
Trento.
Or Trenton, sorry, Trenton would be fully funded. The original one.
Yes, and that's Trenton.
In the.
The amount of three hundred and sixty nine thousand six seventy five. Did you include Logan's withdrawal? That Logan.
Yeah, he did.
Okay, motion?
A second.
And a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much. That's good.
No, I think so. So this is scheduled to go to the county council tomorrow. Their meeting starts at five. I I would, you don't have to be there, Mayor. Idalco's gonna, sorry. Just train me on how to say his name.
Fine laugh, Mr. Say, and I'm gonna be there.
So Mayor, he's gonna present to the county council this recommendation.
We're counting on you. What what could go wrong?
What could go wrong? Ask him.
So we have had pretty good success with the county council not doing wholesale changes or over, they they respect that you guys have done the heavy lifting and vetting of the projects. And really, for the most part, every year, they've accepted that. You know, we've had some little dust ups. One of the requirements was, you know, that's where we had the requirement to hold the public hearings. So that if there's citizen complaints, it can be held at a local level. The reason I bring this up is it might be good for some of you to be present at that council meeting because if particular questions come up about your project that that we'll try to answer, but it might be good to have you there. If particular county council members ask a question particularly to a project, so they can respond and that'll be like, you know, that.
We'll we'll make sure they understand that Nibley's withdrawal or lack of funding on that last phase was not changed if and neither was local.
I'll be addressing that in the comments. So make sure. I'm gonna. Have them back.
Well, it actually shows true elaboration.
Shows everyone working together to try and stretch it as far.
My position on that is it's pretty hard. There are an organization to challenge another organization's work together. Because they have nothing, get no skin in, but the organizations do. So I, what we've done is very, very important. It's very good. And we've done that, we've had that experience several times, but then involved the COG last nine years.
We just have a one last agenda item.
Okay, discuss possible COG policy, prioritization process, changes for next year.
So this is just while it's fresh on your mind, all these things that we've talked about, we don't have to solve them all now. We would entertain them as policy changes when we gear up next year. What we're doing is just soliciting of what things you, possible policy changes you want to see brought up and. Uh, brought up and and we'll we'll dig into. Um, that you don't have to give us everything now. We'd ask if you you could email it to us. Mayor or Jesse or myself, we'll just kind of create a list. And that way, next year we'll remember, okay, we need to start looking into some of these things. Now, the the wild card on that is the cog master plan, about to figure out how to how that may or may not. Uh, change things when that when we get that done. But we're not optimistic that's gonna be done. At at the point that we need to start a new cog process unless we delay it.
Mayor Daines.
I I think one question is, you know, do we want to continue with the engineering allowance? Or do we want to fund the actual projects that are ready to go and there there ended up being Logan included? You know, a lot of projects that were asking funding for engineering. So I guess that's. You know, and I I agree, it's probably harder for smaller communities to come up with those funds, but. Would we rather go back to the way we had done before? In that you you do have to bring a project that's essentially shovel ready. To ask for funding and I'm just asking the question.
Well, Mayor Cox and I discussed this, and I think he's got a good point. Uh, maybe we wanna look at engineering funding based on the city's class, where they're classified.
As I. I talked to a few of the mayors in the room, they thought about it. Smaller rural towns struggle with that, coming up with that engineering fund. But the rest. Of the towns want to ensure that. There's some commitment and skin in the game. And. Uh, you know, I was thinking that does. Perhaps it's. Fourth and fifth class towns. And it's capped at amount, but only at thirty percent engineering. Now it requires a town to be committed. And provide some engineering. At at the thirty percent level, but you can't exceed. No engineering costs beyond a hundred or a hundred and fifty. I don't, I don't know what the. You probably need to understand that. The average amount of length of road that's typically going to be engineered, what that cost would be. So I've been trying to think about it because. Uh. You know, there it it's a challenge for the small rural communities to come up with that, so.
When we also had a lower level of engineering design required. Sometimes we didn't get very accurate budget numbers and. It is a challenge. But again, some of the bigger projects, I mean, Logan's engineering is. You know, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a big project versus. Again, it might be just as small.
That may that may be extremely challenging for Logan, but a hundred and fifty thousand dollar. Might be just overwhelming for Cornish. So. It might be. That might be, it is. So.
Mayor, here you have comment?
Well, I just. You know, the project that we're looking at, if we didn't get help with engineering.
It's some cost, and then you risk not getting, not getting, and you don't, you know, we're a government.
I think it's worth having a discussion. Topic for our next meeting and come prepared with some ideas. Like you were saying, you've been thinking about it, well, now you have four or five months, everybody can have four or five months to come up with some thoughts on.
Experience in this, you've been, you've been. You're you're long in the tooth in this group, so.
And maybe everyone that's eligible for the world set aside funds can apply. Maybe that's a natural way. To divide.
Okay, should we plan it for agenda?
And a lot of the time, we tried to do. Right there with the whole, sometimes it's more the smaller ones that fall within CNPO boundaries that are the ones that they get hit the hardest because those that fall. Outside the CNPO boundaries, their projects are usually a little less complicated. We try to use some best judgment, what level of design. But some of them are simple enough that they don't need to go pay an engineer fifty thousand dollars to public the design. But again, when you get some of the middle bills, higher ones where they're kind of the bottom end, so the CNPO, they're the ones that it's like, they need that benefit. Benefit the most from some of the. You complete some of the bigger problems. That they're trying to do.
I think one point to note though is that, at least for us, this allowed us to. Phase our request where if we had. Applied for funding for this entire project and not for now engineering, then. We would have been a behemoth in this funding request and. I I think that I just think we need to be really careful about what sort of behavior we're incentivizing here. Um, and I don't know the answer, but I I think we need to just just think about that. You know, just just think about the different angles of of what that. What that result would be and how it would have changed even just this funding.
Okay, so we'll make that a an agenda item on our next meeting. So I'm prepared to discuss that. What does the council give the year or night? Pardon me, did they do this in the meeting tomorrow night?
They could.
So will you send us out results of that?
Uh, yeah, I'd be happy to. Uh, yeah, it's up to them whether they'll act on it or not. I think it's scheduled as an action on five.
Yeah, where it's at on the agenda.
It's it's towards the beginning. Last year we were towards the beginning and we all bumped to the very end. So it kind of is just one of those things, we're towards the beginning, so if everything goes quickly, it might be in the first half hour. Fingers crossed.
So if you do have ideas, send them my way emails, just. You know, ways we can make the process better, how to apply meeting, how things can be clearer. I mean, we wanna improve the overall process, so now's your chance, or it's fresh on your mind to uh. To communicate to us. Cause, cause by next. May or June, we will have forgotten and you will probably have forgotten, so do it now while it's fresh on your mind.
Well, and I think it would be helpful to know sooner rather than later is we're. Planning our strategy and our budgets, like, okay, if we can't apply for engineering, then somehow we need to come up with that in our own budget, so.
Right, yeah.
I'd rather make a decision.
Yeah, I was hoping like last. Not as just the round we did with the year before, everything got funded, so it was a really easy year, everything went quickly, there was like nine projects. This year we had eighteen or nineteen, it was way more complicated, so I'm kind of hoping that we can maybe try to move some of that scheduling. Up earlier in the year so that. Like the consultant needs a little more time to do their pieces and stuff, so that you may see stuff a little earlier coming next year. Than this year, just so that there are big changes in that. More applications, take more time to process.
And we could try for a November meeting if you wanted to do something this year or or just or just uh. Like Jesse said, try to get it, get it early in the new year. It's up to you.
Early in the new year.
We appreciate that, it's just, you know, I get a little rest. Before it starts up.
It doesn't start from sending my ideas, so. Yeah, we like to get the ideas, we like to be able to take those, look how they'll change the policies and something, you change it one spot and it changes. Another response, still look at those. As well with that first meeting would be a new executive committee as well. In that January.
Jesse, the application have on it when you were would be ready to do the project? I don't remember. If it had an estimated start time. Because that would be important to look at as we determine who gets funding.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea. We could add that. I don't think we.
The fire for that exact date.
Yeah.
But if it looks like you could start in a month of of being. Um, on the list and getting the the funding. That would be different than if you're looking at nine months before you need to get started.
The the challenge. People can always put that on there, but is is State or Carson gonna jump on four million dollar project? Are they gonna come work on my three hundred thousand dollar roundabout? Presented the facts to them.
What we were discussing before is how how can you really foresee how long the project's gonna take is. Yeah, they're gonna take these big projects and push back two, three years, the small ones, that's what we've seen in the pandemic.
Yes.
But I think we can apply a date that that we feel is reasonable.
That you're reasonable to move forward, whether or not you can get a contractor to do it at that timeframe, I I.
Therein lies the issue right there. Therein lies that issue.
And by and part, well, majority of those projects, by the time it goes to council, then all the projects, there's a contracting period that takes just a county or. The county holds those funds, so it takes maybe a month, month and a half to go through those, that process. So we hopefully most and most of the time, a lot of the projects then will contract, they're fully funded to go the beginning of the year and within that year, the next year. They're underway and. Unless they have to come up for more funds, but usually for the most part. And we're only, most of that, if you go back to nineteen, there's not much left for that. There's only two or three years, a lot of the older one are underway or in progress.
But we can make a list of those issues and look at them and talk about all of them, so that we're at least making an informed decision.
Yeah, one thing we implemented was, if you remember at the beginning of the cog cycle. We do, we list out the projects that are older. And we kind of put your eight to the fire in that meeting to say, where's the project? How's it moving? Uh, you know, the idea of which second. You know, those funds. It's an opportunity, you say, well, we we don't need all the funding, so that gives us an opportunity to reallocate it. So that's helped a lot, just kind of.
I thought that worked really well today, actually. To have people say, you know, I'm not gonna get to that, it's okay, I understand I can get. Funding, because we know the funding is coming. Um, we'll have additional funding, so. I thought that showed great collaboration, cooperation.